The session is now called to order. Please rise for the singing of national anthem. Let us remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Abilianosa. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alcala. Alejano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquino Magseisai. Aragonés. Arbizon. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batokabe. Bautista Bandigan. Bilaro. Belmonte Villisiano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Bulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Kalalang. Calderon. Kalik Sorbiano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Fredinil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Cerápica. Siriles. Chaves. Chipeco. Co. Cuanco. Culiantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Quaresma. Cueba. Dalipe. Datol. Daza. Jesus. De Venetia. De Vera. Defensor. Delmar. De Rosario. De Loza Montalia. Di Maporo Abdullah. Di Maporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erice. Rigel. Hermita Bohain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Yusebio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Florendo. Flores. Fortún. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. Garcia Gwendolin. Garcia Jose. Garcia Albano. Gary Richard. Gary Sharon. Gassetaya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzales Alexandria. Gonzales Dong. Gonzales Fernando. Goriseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Halusos. Javier. Co. Congun. Labad Labad. Lacson. Lagman. Lenete. Logan. Lasatin. Lea Chon. Lee. Lim Kai Chong. Lobrigat. Lopez Benur. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodatatus Huarto. Mangodatatus Sajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marino. Marquez. Martinez. Matugas. Miliana. Minding. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Segabas. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramirisato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Robapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdés. Romualdo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sangkopan. San Dival. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar. Sevillano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Rasyo. Suárez. Silbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherny. Tejada. Teves. Chanko. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupaz. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Caterra. Veloso. Vergara. Villa Puerte. Villa Nueva. Villa Rasa Suárez. Villa Rica. Villa Rin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Milesho. Yap Victor. You. Samor Markamen. Samor Ronaldo. Zarate. Subiri. Speakers present.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 208 members responded to the call.
With 208 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we have some special guests in the gallery that we'd like to greet. First are the guests of the Honorable Majority Leader Rolando Andaya Jr. These are the municipal councillors of Cipocot Camarinesur. Councillor Felix Macalino III. Marcelo Abergos. Robel Astor. Eduardo de La Penya. Jobi Alemania. And Liga President Elano C. Gabriel.
Guests of Majority Leader Rolando Andaya, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd also like to greet the guests of the Honorable Tom Villarín from Akbayan Party List. These are the members of Workers for EML. Eva Arcos, Seon, Binos, Susan Dehon, Rea Foliente, Teresita Yuen Abana, Ana Lisa Bulaong, Rene Magtubo, Rayan Librado, and Nais Coronación.
Guests of Representative Tom Villarín, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
In addition to those members previously mentioned, Mr. Speaker, we also have Julieta Gipallen, Robelin Duroco, Rena Jade Pasqual, Mary Ann Oroz, Janet Demos, Mary Jane Labongray, Lolín Paglinawan, Ruby Monge, Marjorie Asera, Zali Bermal, Jinky Fulhensho, Jennifer Navora, Julie Peralta, Armelisa Gamo, Evangeline Esguera, Josefina De La Serna, Cherry Catalán, Christine Anel Vitalisia, Gillian Roche, Lila Arlegi, Lynn Signo, Rosita Clemente, Kristibon, Imelda Lawinko, Danika Kanameke, Marilyn Carpella, Ligaya Samuya, Cecilia Eleve, Mary Jane Franco, Imelda Berinia, Nilda Gapassen, Lisa Santa Romana, Lizel Benmonte, Maria Teresa Co., Graziela May Servantes, Kathy Gayo, Mira Dongquila, Charito Jose, Edgardo Ignacio, Sharon Grace Francisco, Salvacion Gagani, Evangeline Aborita, Rose Marie Aborita, and Romelina Cordova. Mr. Speaker. We'd also like to greet the guests of the Honorable Bernadette BH Herrera Di. These are the members of the Workers for EML Expanded Maternity Leave headed by Ms. Rayan Librado.
Guests of Representative Bernadette Herrera, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd also like to greet the guests of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Ferdinand Hernandez. These are constituents and guests of his from Barangay Quematu, Municipality of Tiboli, South Cotobato. These are Datu Hemon Tuwan, Datu Yanni Tuwan Jr., Boy Sandy Carter, Boy Lamfai Tuwan, Boy Rowena Tuwan, Emily Sands and Attorney Puresi, Villa Agustin and her husband.
Guests of Deputy Speaker Ferdinand Hernandez, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd also like to greet the guests of the Honorable Francisco Gambowa Datol Jr. from Senior Citizens Party List. These are his visitors from Barangay Niugan, Hayen, Nueva Isihah. Particularly Barangay Captain Jimmy Bar yoga, Barangay Kagawad Julita Yangah, Barangay Kagawad Leoncio Marquez, Barangay Kagawad Antonio Santilian, Barangay Kagawad Anthony Kinlantang, Barangay Kagawad Roberto Manio, Barangay Secretary Cesar Bitanggol, and Manding Ador Dionisio.
Guests of Representative Francisco Gambowa Datol, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, allow us to recognize the guests of the Honorable Ramon Rav Rocamora from the Lone District of Siquehor. These are students mostly from PUP belonging to the organization, student advocates for reform tax or start now coalition. These are Is Nihaya, Binumbaran, Johayma, Pakasum, City Aina Kosain, Maria Nicole Policarpio, Trixia May Consul, Johani Arteche, Ina Erica Aquino, Charis Santana Villaruel, Joshua Carlo Buban, Johannes Rivera, Leyla Guelas, Gabrielle Glotton, Maria Siannel Payumo, Christine May Rubis, and Arvin Kapiral.
Guests of Representative Ramon Rocamora, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
And finally, Mr. Speaker, allow us to greet the guest of the Honorable Jeffrey Congun from the First District of Zambales. These are barangay council members and other officials of barangay San Isidro, San Marcelino Zambales, and from barangay Linusungan, San Marcelino Zambales. These are Punong barangay Romeo Halasko with Kagawads Linnard Ramos, Herculino Paje Jr., Giorgio Arabe, Rolando Flamiano, Violeta Salonga, Marilyn Abelon, Federico Cruz, SK Chairperson Crystal Mary Labador, Secretary Marvik, Ragine and Treasurer Latisha Alcuino, as well as Lupon members Mauro Paje, Conrad Rosete, Reynaldo Lontoc, Rolando Obbrero, Johnny Paje, Revy Vergara, Nanita Filarka, Segundina Regua, Delma Magindin, Estelita de Jesús, and barangay council and other barangay officials from Linusungan, Punong barangay Dionisio García, Kagawad Joe Ragadio, Jeffrey de la Cruz, George Alamanko, Lina Fontilia, Journey Rasell, Bobby Thomas, Gertrudes Domingo, SK Chairman Rex Raymond Ragadio, Secretary Sheila Marie Dalit, daycare workers Eileen Reg, BHW Lilamay Reg, BHW Carmelita Alipio, BHW Binos, Segyente Lupon, Sionaida Rabe, Corazon Reg, Noymir Roldan, Peso Officer Chrisel de Babas, Bipat Renne Apano, Edeline Reg, Joseph Tison, Karen Rasell, Ade Luiza, Florita, Elizabeth Apano, and Clarita García.
Guests of Representative Jeffrey Congun, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we now proceed with a reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed through the title of the bills and resolution on first reading thereafter referred to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business Bills on First Reading, House Bill 8095, mandating 14th month pay for all employees in the government and private sector regardless of status of employment, Representative Salo and Kalala.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8096, establishing an integrated national school in barangay Capui, city of Sorsogon, province of Sorsogon to be known as Capui Integrated National School, Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8097, urging the national government to set fish and meat tariffs to zero, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 8098, declaring February 26 of the year as Philippine Israeli Friendship Day, Representative Aumentado.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Bill 8099, providing for monetary reparations for the loss or destruction of residential houses, commercial buildings, and other properties in Marawi City during the 2017 siege of Marawi, Representative Papandayan.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 8103, establishing Extension Office of the LTO in Calamba, Misamis Occidental, Representative Almonte.
To the Committee on Transportation. To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2069, directing the Committee on Local Government to inquire on the alleged anomalous practice by the local governments in Misamis Occidental. Representative Oominal.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2070, congratulating, commending Jack Tepora for winning the World Boxing Association Featherweight Title. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Resolution 2071, expressing warm felicitations and congratulations to Mr. Alfonso Areola for being the first person with a Filipino heritage to win the 2018 Federation International Football Association World CUP World Cup Championship. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 2072, expressing deepest sympathies and condolences to the families of the victims of the recent flooding and landslides in Japan. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2073, calling for the investigation of the rampant construction establishment of private resorts and other buildings around bodies of water of the public domain. Representative Villafuerte.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2074, calling for investigation by the appropriate committee on the revival and reconstitution of congressional committee on oversight. Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2075, expressing profound condolences on the demise of former Dagupan City Mayor and Immigration Commissioner Alipio Al Fernandez Jr. Representatives Makapagal Roy and De Venezio.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated August 8, informing the House that the Senate even date approved Conference Committee report disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 6031 and 6003.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letter dated July 3, Provincial Governor Agusan del Sur, quarterly physical financial reports of operations.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Email dated July 6, 2018, submitting the report on fund utilization, Pulilan Bulakan.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Email dated July 9 of DILG Marilao Bulakan, submitting the report on fund utilization status program project implementation ended June 2018.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Email dated July 12 of DILG Balagtas Bulakan, submitting the report of fund utilization status program ended June 2018 on the LGSF.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Email dated July 12, Municipal Mayor Tabogon Cebu.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Quarterly Financial Report of Operations, Cebu Capital, Cebu on the LGSF CMMG.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization of San Fernando, Cebu.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program of Gamu Isabella.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program of Itogon Benguet.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program ended June 30 of Borbon, Cebu.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program, second quarter of 2018 of Bolijon, Cebu.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program ended June 30 on the LGSF.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization, second quarter of 2018, San Isidro, Nueva Isia.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization ended June 30 of Liloan, Cebu.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports. Report Numbers 820 to 822 by the Committees on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 8100 to 8102.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed with our unfinished business, I would like to greet a special guest. Actually, who is here right now in the plenary with us, Bayan Muna, Representative Saturo Campo.
Nagmamalaki po natin kasama natin dito. Ang dati natin kasamahan, kinatawan Saturo Campo. Mabubukay po kayo. Welcome, senyong bahay. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 6770 as contained in Committee Report 508, submitted by the Committee on Labor and Employment. And for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General read the title of the said measure.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 6770 under Committee Report 508 for consideration.
House Bill 6770, An Act Increasing the Service Incentive Leave of Employees, amending for the purpose Article 95 of Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the status of the bill is that it is the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Labor and Employment, the Honorable Ting, be recognized.
The gentleman and the distinguished Chairperson of the Committee on Labor and Employment, Representative Randy Ting, is recognized.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may I present for your approval, House Bill 6770, entitled An Act Increasing the Service Incentive Leave of Employees in the Private Sector, amending for the purpose Article 95 of PD 442, the Labor Code of the Philippines. This bill seeks to amend the law on the right of employees to service incentive leave. The Labor Code provides that every employee who has rendered at least one year of service shall be entitled to a yearly service incentive of five days with pay. There are exemptions, though, to this mandated benefit. It should not apply to those who are already enjoying the benefit herein provided. Two, those enjoying vacation leave with pay of at least five days. Three, those employed in establishment, regularly employing less than ten employees or in establishments exempted from granting this benefit. Mr. Speaker, the proposal of this bill is simply to increase the mandated yearly incentive to ten days from the existing five days. The current five-day SIL granted our workers annually is inadequate to meet the need of our workers for sufficient rest. The complex and stressful lifestyle of our generation leaves the worker susceptible to sickness aside from stress due to natural and man-made calamities and other emergencies that require absence from our jobs. The increase of the service incentive leave to ten days give a balanced work life to employees as it provides a longer period of vacation leave with pay. Also, the increase to ten days will certainly be more beneficial to the employee as this benefit is readily available when the employee is sick and needs to seek medical care. A sick employee who may have a contagious illness will not be able to work effectively and the additional service incentive leaves gives the employee more time to take some respite for self-care and healing. Mr. Speaker, we therefore seek for the approval of this measure because the grant of additional service incentive leave will be good for the welfare of our workers. Additional days for the service incentive leave would mean more time for the employee to rest, to recharge, to heal, or more time to be with the people that inspire him to work even better. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation. But there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation. Sorry, Mr. Speaker, allow me to amend that motion. I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other, no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
The Chair is not. Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendment, I now move that we proceed to the period of individual amendments.
Let us first close the period of committee amendments. Any motion to close the period of amendments?
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we reconsider my earlier motion to close the period of individual amendments.
I think the motion that you filed is the closing of committee amendments. And you're not yet opening the, you're not the period of individual amendments. You have no motion to open the period of individual amendments.
Mr. Speaker, I actually moved to close the period of amendments after I closed the period of committee amendments.
What's the next motion?
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of individual amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 6770.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader. Session suspended. Sessions resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up items in the calendar of business for the day. I assume.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading. Uh, House Bill Number 6769 in Committee Report 507. And for this, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 6769 under Committee Report 507 for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 6769, an act expanding the prohibition of discriminatory acts against women on account of sex, amending for the purpose Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
To sponsor the measure, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Randy Ting.
The Chairperson of the Committee on Labor and Employment, our distinguished colleague Honorable Randy Ting, is recognized to sponsor House Bill 6769.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I first sincerely thank the authors, Representatives Emilin Aglipay Villar and Sprite B. Revilla for exposing House Bill Number 6769, which the Committee on Labor and Employment has submitted under Committee Report Number 508 for consideration of the House of Representatives. This bill seeks to penalize employers who give preference to a male employee over a female employee in the hiring process, whether through notices or advertisement for employment or in the actual recruitment, hiring, or employment where the job could be equally handled by a woman. This bill also prohibits the denial to any woman of the benefits of employment or other statutory benefits under our laws by reason of her sex. Under Section 14 of Article 2, the Philippine Constitution requires the state to recognize the role of women in nation-building and ensure the fundamental equality before the law of women. Through this legislation, we are translating into action this constitutional mandate and contributing to a stronger policy framework that will not only protect women but strengthen and further define their important role in our society. Even in this day and age, discrimination on the basic basis of sex persists. It takes many forms, but it is perhaps the most debilitating in the workplace where rigid company hierarchies and a lack of transparency ensure that abuses persist unchecked. The role of legislation in this case is to rip away the protective veil of sexual discrimination by making its violations visible and by making the text of the law explicit with regards to which action constitute discrimination, as well as making sure that the gravity of the punishment suits the gravity of the offense. Mr. Speaker, with these considerations, I ask for your support for this very important measure. On behalf of the Committee on Labor and Employment, I earnestly seek the support and approval of the House of Representatives of this important bill, which aims to prevent and combat discrimination against women, which is fundamental to a democracy. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Since we have no interpolations, Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, we have perfecting amendments to House Bill Number 6769.
Majority Leader, is it a committee amendments?
Yes, may we know from this sponsor if these are committee amendments or individual amendments that will be proposed by other members of the House.
It's a committee amendment, Mr. Speaker.
May you have this sponsor proceed with the committee amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, on page one, line one, change the number 133 to number 135. On the same page, line four.
Mr. Speaker, may you have this one by one. I would, I move, Mr. Speaker, for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Majority Leader.
May you have the next amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Next amendment, please.
On the same page, line four, change the number 133 to number 135.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as stated by this sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Majority Leader. Next amendment, please.
On the next, on page two, line four, change the number 288 to number 273 and number 289 to number 274.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Next.
On the same page, line, on the same page, line 10, change the number 135 to 137.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendments as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Next amendment.
On the same page, line 12, change the number 135 to number 137.
Majority Leaders.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Next amendment.
On the same page, line 28, change the number 135A to number 137A.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Next amendment.
On the same page, line 29, change the number 135 to 137.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Next amendment.
On the same page, line 31, change the number 135A to number 137A.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Majority Leader. Uh, next amendment.
If there are. There are two more. On the same page, line 32, change the number 133 to 135 and the number 135 to number 137.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Any amendment?
Yes, the last will be on page three, line five, change the number 133 to number 135 and the number 135 to number 137.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as proposed by the sponsor.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment approved. Majority Leader.
If there are no other amendments, Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, with that, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6769.
Those who are in favor of House Bill 6769 on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 6769 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended.
Hello ma'am, maganda nga po. Mam, mga sundan mo. Maganda nga, um, nagkukusain. Aso, aso yun lang, aso yun, bara sa taong mo, sa taong mo, sa taong mo. Thank you, thank you, thank you ma'am.
Sessions resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, allow me to greet some guests in the gallery before you proceed with the business for today. Um, these are the guests of the Honorable Franz Castro and Antonio Tino. The members of the Caloocan Public Elementary and Secondary Teachers Federation. These are Mylene Amparo, Grace Edora, Marietta Tan, Jacqueline Abinalles, and Nelson Portes. Members of the Quezon City Public School Teachers Association, Ruby Anna Bernardo, Ana Riza Alzate, Christian Navales Malabon Public School Teachers Association, Wellhelmina Vivar, Maria Divina Esteban, Charito Tamondong, ACT PASI Member Roberto Sorban, and the Alliance of Concerned Teachers and Philippines Secretary General Raymond Basilio, ACT NCR Union President Jocelyn Martinez, and ACT NCR Union Education Committee Chair Vladimir Ketua.
Guests, representatives, Franz Castro and Antonio Tino.
Private or public. So for every market, there should be atimbangan ng bayan, Mr. Speaker.
Who will run the atimbangan bayan, Mr. Speaker?
The local government units, Mr. Speaker, through their provincial, city, or municipal treasurer's, are mandated to provide the atimbangan ng bayan and the monitoring as well should be done by the LGU.
So it's very clear, and it is clear on the proposed law, that the atimbangan bayan will be provided by the local or provincial governments. The treasurer's office of local or provincial governments are required to provide this particular protection of consumers' rights. Pero di puro na din diwan agenyan sa letra ng ating proposed law. Para malinaw po, nakikita ko po ito'y darating ng mga panahon ay magkaroon ng konting confusion, and when there is confusion, of course, the consumer will suffer because of non-implementation. So ilalagay po ba natin doon na talaga ang local or provincial government units are the ones who will be made responsible?
That is correct, Mr. Speaker. The law strictly provides that the local government units, through their provincial, city, or municipal treasurer's, are mandated to establish their respective atimbangan ng bayan in both private and public markets, Mr. Speaker. And the monitoring of such atimbangan ng bayan is given or should be provided by the local government unit, Mr. Speaker.
And in the same manner, we should clearly state that all consumers, whether customers of the private or the public market, can avail of the atimbangan bayan.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Everyone who goes to the market, whether it's a public or private market, should be able to avail of the atimbangan ng bayan.
And this is where we will include the phrase that says, including flea markets that are organized on certain days where consumers also should be protected.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker. Flea markets and kiyangges are not regular markets, but they are being set up for certain occasions or weekends, and they are also covered by this law.
Isa lang ang puntanong na kailangan po nating idein. Ano po ba ang ating minumungkahe na kaparusahan kapag ka nahuling nandadaya ang sinuman sa ating mga mamimili? Sa hirap ng panahon ngayon, ang dayain ka ng isang 1% or 2% or 10% is a big reduction to the buying capacity of the peso. So magkano po ba ang inyong naiisip na karapat-dapat na kaparusahan?
Well, Mr. Speaker, the penalties are quite stiff. For any person who shall violate the provisions of this law, of this act, will be subject to a fine of not less than 50,000 pesos.
Magkano po?
Not less than 50,000 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Not less than 50,000?
Yes, but not more than 300,000 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Eh binabati po natin sila sa kanilang pamang estima. Na ito'y napakaselan na pagdaraya na kailangan ang kaparusahan ay maigpit at pabigat. Pwede ba natin dagdagan at repeated the repeated violation of this law, any vendor or any store found cheating any consumer would be subject to the cancellation of their business permits?
We could consider the same, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the pleasure of the gentleman.
Ang suggestion po namine.
Yes.
Meron po ba time provision then that after a number of repeated violation of this law, the vendor who is a perpetual cheater be deprived of his business permit to be canceled by the provincial or the local government. Therefore, he cannot cheat anymore.
Well, as I have mentioned, Mr. Speaker, apart from the monetary penalty that is imposed on violators of this law, there is an imprisonment of not less than one year, but not more than five years or both upon the discretion of the court.
Again, we congratulate the sponsor for the the magnitude, the gravity of the punishment which will be meted out to a cheater in any market. Pero di ba natin ilagay doon na hindi lamang siya makukulong. Siya hindi na makapagminegosyo sapagka tatanggalan siya ng lisensya ng alcalde o ng gubernador.
Well, the assumption, Mr. Speaker, that if the violator gets penalized, including imprisonment, then that would deprive him automatically of setting up or continuing his business because of the penalty imposed on the violation committed, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, hindi po naman automatic yun sapagka ang isang magdaraya, pag nahuli ay magdaraya ulit. Pwedeng 'yung kasawa niya o 'yung anak niya. Pwedeng 'yung empleyado niya o pwedeng ang umamin ay empleyado siya na makukulong. Pero 'yung negosyo tuloy at 'yung pagdaraya ay uulit-ulitin. Pwede ba natin isingit yun na he or she or the store will no longer be doing business in that particular market? Or rather, his permit to do business will be canceled after a repeated you determine three times nahuli ka nagdaraya ka, you are perpetually disqualified to do business. Pero di ba naman isingit yun?
Well, as I said, Mr. Speaker, that suggestion of Representative Atienza is is a welcome suggestion, and perhaps we could incorporate that in the in the proposed measure as well, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we are making this clarifications and issuing the recommendations so that this law will put a stop to the cheating activities in practically everywhere in the country. Pag bumili kayo ng isang kilo, malamang bawas po ng dalawang guhit yan. Pag kayo bumili ng prutas, ganun din po. Pag bumili kayo ng bigas, malamang meron ding kakulangan, isa o dalawang guhit. Kaya kailangan po ilagay natin lahat dito upang matiyak natin na 'yung ating iniiwasan at 'yung ating nais matigil na masamang gawain ay magkaroon ng tunay na visa at takot at respeto ang sinumang mag-iisip mandaya. Pagka ikaw ay naalisan ng lisensya, mahihirapan ka na makapagbukas muli ng iyong tindahan. Kaya 'yung pong mga mungkahe ng inyong lingkod ay mga mungkahing naglalayon na magkaroon ng visa itong panukalang batas nilyo upang pag ito'y umiral na ang ating consumer ay mabibigyan ng proteksyon sa napakahalakan salapi ngayon. Hawawala ng bayang power ng ating piso, argabiado mga mahihirap dito, pero sa batas na ito, sa bawat salapi, sa bawat piso na kanilang gugugulin, nakatitiyak sila na tama ang bigat nung kanilang binibili. With that, Mr. Speaker, I thank the sponsor as I will wait for the period of amendments to to urge him to just adjust the wardings of his proposal so that mabilis po nating maaprobaan sa araw na ito. Salamat po.
Maraming pang salamat. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other interpolator, I move that we close the period of interpolation and debate.
Any objection? The chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The chair is not. The motion is approved. Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Baron.
The Chairman of the Committee on Trade and Industries recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. After confering with a gentleman from Buay, the following amendment is introduced. After subparagraf C of section 3, the following amendment is inserted. Provided further that the succeeding-
Before we, before I recognize you for that amendment, may I clarify if it is a committee amendment or individual amendment?
It's a committee amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we have individual amendments, Mr. Speaker. May we hear from the sponsor?
That is an individual amendment. May I hear from the sponsor? What is the individual amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The following individual amendment is inserted after subparagraf C of section 3, Mr. Speaker, which provides that the succeeding violation of this act shall automatically result in the cancellation of the business permit of the violator, whether natural or juridical. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
May I know who introduced that individual amendment for record purposes?
The individual amendment was introduced by Buay representative.
Is the sponsor amendable to that amendment?
Yes, after confering with Representative Atienza.
Any objection from the body? The chair is not. The amendment is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, since the amendment is an individual amendment as proposed by the Honorable Atienza, may we hear from the from Honorable Atienza on this amendment?
Honorable Atienza, Buay party is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment that we have agreed on will read after subparagraf C of section 3, the insertion of provided further that repeated violation of this act for a total of two. Two violations will automatically result in the cancellation of the business permit of the violator, whether natural or juridical.
Is the good sponsor, does this sponsor amendable to that amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection from Majority Leader?
With that, Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment
Any objection?
by the Honorable Atienza.
The chair is not. The motion is approved. Amendment approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, since there are no other amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of House Bill Number 7857 on second reading.
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7857 and the Committee Report 787 is approved on second reading as amended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended. Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill 4113 as contained in Committee Report Number 13 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said measure. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 4113 and the Committee Report 13 for consideration on second reading.
House Bill Number 4113, "An Act Increasing the Maternity Leave Period to 100 Days for Female Workers in the Government Service and in Private Sector and Granting an Option to Extend for an Additional 30 Days Without Pay."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairperson of Women and Gender Equality, Representative Bernadette Herrera-Din.
The Chairperson of the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, Representative Bernadette Herrera-Din is recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we're in the period of interpolation, so we're open to any additional interpolations.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Buay Party List, the Honorableito Atienza, for his interpolation. So move.
The gentleman from Buay Party List, Representative Lito Atienza, is recognized to interpolate the good sponsor.
Alamat po, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. And thank you to the Congresswoman who has worked very hard for the passage of this bill and for the sponsors of the measure. But permit me to just be repetitive about the questions that we have been asking all this time since we took it up in the Committee on Rules. Gusto ko pun tiyakin na talagang matutuloy po ito at magagawa nating bigyan ng isandaang araw na maternity leave ang mga ina na magsisilang ng kanilang mga sanggol. As a pro lifer, Mr. Speaker, I like this bill because it will encourage mothers to have more children, to enjoy the privileges of this act. On the other hand, we have to be very clear as to how this measure will be implemented. Otherwise, we will create a big disappointment on the part of mothers who will expect to enjoy the benefits of this measure. Pwede po bang makapagtanong ng ilang pang mga katanungan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Una po, 'yung po ba isandaang araw ay binibilang ang Sabado Linggo o isandaang araw na bibilangin natin separate from the Saturdays and Sundays of the period?
Balik kasama po ang Sabado Linggo. Tuloy-tuloy po siya. For example, January 1 to 31, February 1 to February 28, March 1 to March 31. So bilang po siya 100 days.
Madali salita ay isandaang araw kasama na po ang Sabado Linggo.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ang susunod na gusto ko po linawin para matiyak nating ito'y matutuloy at ito'y hindi mabibitin sa balag ng alanganin na magbibigay lang ng false hope to our women and our mothers. Importante po 'yung meron po ba kayong assurance na meron ang salapi na magugugul dito sa privilehiyong itong? Una, meron ba kayong certifications sa GSIS kapag at sila po'y bahagi sa susuporta sa problema ang pananalapi?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. As a matter of fact, ang SSS, ang GSIS, ang ECOP, or Employees Confederation of the Philippines, ganun din po ang League of Cities of the Philippines and Union of Local Authorities and of the Philippines are all in support of this bill. At sinasabi po nila na sila po ay natutuwa at kabilang at kasama natin sa pagpapatupad nitong 100 days maternity leave.
Meron po ba silang mga dilagdaang approval or the suggestion and commitment to provide the necessary funds to implement the law?
Nandun po sa kanilang position paper, Mr. Speaker, na sila po ay sumusuporta dito at nakahanda po silang i-implement. Dahil as a matter of fact, ang sabi nga po ng ECOP, most of the corporations in the Philippines, dahil under na rin siya ng ILO na 98 days, 'yung two days talagang na additional, baliwala sa kanila. Kaya ginagawa na nila tong practice ngayon. 'Yung additional dalawang araw para sa kanila is nothing already. Kaya ito ay isang practice na ginagawa na ng private companies sa ngayon.
Maraming salamat po dun sa pagliliwanag na yon sapagat importante po na may pera na gugugulin sa benepisyo. Kung hindi eh, hawap po naman 'yung mga ina. Aasah, kung sila ay government employee o private employee, eh hindi naman sila mabibigyan pala ng benepisyo. So with that assurance, we congratulate the lady for perseverance and diligence in securing these guarantees. Dun po naman sa mga local government employees and provincial employees, meron po ba tayong pagsangayon na hawak na ninyo na nanggagaling po sa mga gubernador, mayors, city mayors, municipal mayors, and other local officials who are also burdened by their budgetary requirements? Kung sila po ay nakabuo na ng budget, mahihirapan sila magbigyan ng benepisyo sa taong ito. Pero kung sa darating na taon, with their guarantee, pwede na bang puasahan ng mga benepsiyaryo yan? At 'yung batas ay maipatutupad. So the questions that I've been asking in the committee are the questions that I have... I am constrained to ask the lady's sponsor, the chairperson, and the other sponsors of the measure. Meron na po ba tayong garantia sa mga provincial government leaders na meron silang pagsangayon at salapi na ilalaan dito sa batas na ito?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Ako'y nagpapasalamat sa ating Deputy Minority Leader dahil sa kanya, na-secur talaga namin 'yung ating position papers mula sa Union of Local Authorities of the Philippines. Ito po 'yung umbrella organization ng lahat ng leagues, ng local governments of divisions, provinces, cities, municipalities, and barangays. At sila po ay nagbigay ng assurance na talagang sinusuportahan nila itong 100 days maternity leave. Meron din po itong... meron din po tayong nakuha mula sa League of Cities of the Philippines na sila rin po ay sumusuporta dito po sa panukalang batas na ito.
Mr. Speaker, 'yung kanilang pagsuporta, naintindihan ba nila na ito'y gugugul sila ng malaking salapi sa pagsuporta dito sa batas na ito? Na 'yung benepsiyaryo, empleyado nila, empleyada nila, ay hihingi ng karagdagang sustento para sa isandaang araw ng kanila ang pagdadalan tao, pagsisilang ng sanggol, at recovery period for the mothers. Malinaw po ba 'yung pera na pinag-uusapan natin?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. As a matter of fact, una, para dun sa mga GSIS members natin, nakaready po at nakahanda ang GSIS para dito. At para naman dun sa mga ibang mga empleyado, pagkapo tayo ay nagseset ng appropriate ng budget, meron po tayong personal services. Kasama po kasi ito eh, dahil hindi naman po siya nagdadagdag ng additional na sweldo. Pero sa kabilang banda, hindi lang papasok dun sa araw na yon ang isang empleyado, pero sa sweldo pa rin siya. So naka earmark na 'yung sweldo, kaya wala silang additional appropriation na idadagdag para sa taon na yon.
Ang mayas lamang po natin siguruhin ay, kung 'yung mga alcalde, inatanggap nila 'yung kanilang tungkulin na ang benepsiyaryo ay kailangan mabigyan ng karagdagang benepisyo. Hindi po natin masasabi kumuha kayo sa GSIS. Hindi po ganun kasimple ang karapatan ng mga empleyado sa local government. At with your assurance that local government organizations like ULAB, meron na kayong written assurance and support from them?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Meron din po kayong binanggit na League of Cities and Municipalities. And ang aulugan 'yung mga alcalde naman, ang municipyo at mga lunsod, ay sumasangayon din.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
At meron din silang salapi.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Pwede po ba 'yung inyong mga dokumentong nakalap ay mabigyan niyo ang aking tanggapan para po naman maidipensa natin ang lahat ng mga ina na sa mga darating na panahon ay magreklamo na hindi binibigay sa kanila ng kanilang local government 'yung karapatan nila? Can we have copies of the GSIS? The SSS?
Yes.
The League of Cities? The Union of Local Authorities? Para po matulungan namin kayo?
Opo.
Mr. Speaker, with this assurances of the lady, I congratulate her for being patient with our kakulitan sapagat gusto naming matuloy talaga itong panukalang ito. Ang ina ay bigyan ng isandaang araw ng pamamahinga at pag-aaruga at mabigyan ng breastfeeding 'yung mga bagong sanggol, sinilang na sanggol. And with that, I'm proud to apply to be one of the cosponsors of the measure.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Through you, I will submit all the position papers that my... that our committee has received para po mabasa po lahat ng ating Deputy Minority Leader. Marami pong salamat sa inyong suporta at 'yung sa inyong pong pagsabi na gusto niyong magiging author ng batas na ito. Salamat po. At salamat din po sa kakulitan ninyo.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Marami pong salamat. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Arnold T. from Party List LPGMA for his interpolation.
Honorable Arnold T. from Party List LPGMA is recognized to interpolate the good sponsor, the Chairperson of the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I ask some clarification to the beautiful sponsor?
Gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah. Under this House Bill 4113, "An Act Increasing the Maternity Leave Period to 100 Days for Female Workers in the Government, Received Services and in the Private Sectors and Granting an Option to Extend for Additional 30 Days Without Pay." So this act came from a Republic Act 1161. Is it accurate?
Republic Act 8282.
Okay, so that is the latest 8282.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
As amended, coming from Republic Act 7322 and 1161. Okay, I just want to ask for the viability of SSS fund for this bill. It says here that we are giving 100 days coming from a 60 days maternity leave. May I know if for the... for just checking if the viability of SSS fund is... How many workers is registered now in the Philippines?
15.9 million, Mr. Speaker. 15.9 million, Mr. Speaker.
Can you please repeat it?
15.9 million SSS. Is that what you're asking, Mr. Speaker?
So for, this is male and female?
Male and female, Mr. Speaker.
How many male and how many female?
More or less around 50%. So more or less po 50/50, 50% male, 50% female.
Okay, so on the side of the female, may I know if how many percent is under the age of 20 to 35?
Around 15%.
Of the total female workforce?
No, of the total workforce, not just the female workforce.
So when it is a 50% female out of the 15 million workforce, and it is 15% of the total 15 million, that's roughly around 3 million?
But I would like to clarify because according to the studies and the records, only 1.73% avail of the maternity leave benefits. So for example, we have, we have a total of 15.9 million workers and then 50% are female. Out of those female members, only 1.73% avail of the maternity leave.
Yes, but what I'm asking is, how many percent is on the age of 20 to 35? Because these are the age that can still bear child.
I would like to correct the earlier statement. So in eyes nila, the total workforce is 26 million. Out of the 26 million, 15 million are female workers and 10 million are of childbearing years. But 1.73% only avail of the maternity leave.
Okay, so can you give me how will be the new computations for those women that will be availing of these incentives?
According to SSS with the one that they submitted us, it would just be an increase of 0.3%.
No, I mean, what I'm asking is, how do you do the computation?
Medyo complicated 'yung computation nila, but it's adding additional 40 days for the normal and adding 22 and 22 days for the cesarian.
Well, under your bill, Section 5, Letter A, a female member who was, who has paid at least three months or three monthly contribution in the 12 months period immediately preceding the semester of his childbirth, all miscarries or can be, can avail maternity leave, which shall be computed based on the average monthly salary credits. So I'm asking is, how do you compute the salary credits?
It's a very complex computation, but the highest amount is 15,000. 16, ah sorry, 16,000, tumas na.
Okay, so well, the computation to simplify, it is multiplied by six months, divided by 180 days, and then times 100 days if this bill will be passed into law.
I'll read this medyo mahaba. A semester refers to two consecutive quarters ending in the quarter of contingency. A quarter refers to three consecutive months ending March, June, September, or December. To illustrate, assume that the projected date of delivery is March 20, is March 2010. The semester of childbirth would be from October 9 to March 2010. This is called the semester of contingency. Count 12 months backward, starting from the month immediately before the semester of contingency, which is September 2009. Hence, the 12-month period immediately preceding the semester of childbirth or miscarriage is from October 2008 to September 2009. To avail of the benefits, the employee must have paid at least three monthly contributions during this period.
Let's simplify it. Let's say he has a 13,000 or 13,000 minimum wage earner, a 13,000 monthly salary. What will be his benefit?
I'll base it dun sa, I'll use a different example that we have.
Yeah, the example that I'm asking is, if he has a 13,000 minimum wage, which is that is approximately the minimum wage right now is 13,500, what is his benefits or what can he get from this bill?
Okay, so if I'll base it on the 481 pesos minimum wage, so we, the computation.
It's 500, I think it's 100, 514 already.
Anyway, so 514 times 30 days, 15,420. That's the proposed additional maternity leave benefit.
That is per month.
Additional for the 30 days?
Yeah, that is per month. So that means that if you're availing now from 60 to 100 days, so that's approximately three months. So 15,000 times three or more, that will reach around 50,000 plus.
But we have to put in mind that the 60 days is already existing. We're just adding the additional 40 days.
Yeah, but I'm just asking.
That's why I'm answering you based on the additional.
That 15,000 is an additional?
Yes.
Okay, so now, I just want to ask about, when I, when I read the Republic Act 8282, may I know from the sponsor, what are the provisions that has been added to the existing RA 8282?
'Yung isa po na pinakamalaking difference is the additional 40 days for normal and additional 22 days for cesarian and then the extended with no pay na additional 30 days.
Will it be accurate to say that under your Page 3, under number 5 and Letter B, the words says that an additional maternity leaves of 30 days without pay can be avail of the options of a female worker, provided that the employer shall be given due notice in writing or at least 45 days before and end of the ordinary maternity leave. And then Letter C, an employee's availing of the maternity leave periods and benefits must receive not less than 2/3 of their regular monthly wages. Employers from the private sector shall be responsible to pay the salary differentials between the actual cash benefit received from the SSS by the covered female workers and their average weekly or regular wages for the entire duration of the, well, is this portion is the one that you added on the existing RA 8282?
Yes, this is also an additional, Mr. Speaker.
Now, can you explain to me this Letter C? How do you do this computation? Employees availing of a maternity leave periods and benefit must receive not less than 2/3 of their regular monthly wages. Employer from the private sector shall be responsible to pay the salary differentials between the actual cash benefit received from the social security system.
Bali, for example, example is 13,000. 2/3 of 13,000 hindi dapat bababa dun 'yung matatanggap na cash benefit noong empleyado. So nagcompute si SSS, for example, at pagdating kay SSS, mas mababa kunware doon sa 2/3 noong 13,000. Then, the private sector is being requested to cover the difference because this bill is ensuring that at least 2/3 of the wage of an employee, of a female worker who avail the leave, that's the amount that she should receive in cash benefit.
Now, the question is, kanina, when you do the computation of that minimum wage earner, hindi naman siya nag-exceed doon sa threshold natin. How come he can only receive 2/3? And besides, when we are deliberating this, you're justifying that the private sectors or the employer will not shoulder any cost.
I'm sorry, kindly repeat that.
When we are deliberating this in the committee, you justify that the employer, that's why you said the Ecop doesn't object to it, because the employer will not shoulder anything from this bill.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is the final version of the bill wherein it maintains, or we maintain in the committee, that if ever there's a salary difference or if there is a difference in the cash benefit computed, then the private sector will cover the difference.
That is the reason why I'm asking and interpolating because you have a commitment that there will be no extra expenses to be shouldered by the private sectors or the employer. Now, how come now there are? That's the reason why I'm wondering if really Ecop is not objecting to this bill. Because I, I, I talked to many of their members and what they have been informed is that they are not going, or they will not be giving additional expenses for this bill.
Mr. Speaker, I'm, I'm, according to the committee, there was never any commitment that there will not be an additional expense on the private sector.
Well, then, then your statement that the Ecop has no objection, then I would like to read to you the statement of Ecop on the Page 8, Number 3. If this is not considered to be an objection, then I don't know what is this statement is all about. While increasing the paid and the unpaid maternity leave of female workers is beneficial to them, it could result in unintended consequences in terms of their employability and overall productivity in the context of the realities of the labor market and the extensive non-wage benefit to which they are entitled. Number 4, as provided for by this law, there are also other types of leave benefit that both male and female workers are entitled to and they have given. And on the column of female, if this, or the current incentive leave, it's almost 142 days to 160 days. Now, if you will be adding additional 40, then it will reach to almost 200. And they are questioning the number of working days in a year. So the labor productivity level of the Philippines, so magkakaroon na lang ho tayo ng almost five months na hindi sila magtatrabaho rito ngayon. Based on their data from 2006 to 2010, the Philippines are almost in the bottom. If you compare it with other Asian countries, no. The question is, you are saying that Ecop has no objection on this bill, but I don't think this statement alone is saying that they are objective to this bill and it will affect, it will have a big effect in the industry.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I will read the letter of Ecop stating, "We interpose no objection to the increase of the paid maternity leave benefit to 100 days plus an optional unpaid leave of 30 days after childbirth, provided that it is consistent with international labor standards, applicable laws, and practice."
Then how come they gave these recommendations and comments?
They just recommended and gave their comments, but at the end of the day, they accepted it and they interposed no objection. Because as a matter of fact, I personally spoke to them and they said the practice now of many of the companies is 98 days already and it's being implemented as of present. That's why for them, an additional two days is nothing. And, and we are the one of the lowest in Asia, but talagang ginagawa na nilang 98 days for a long time already. Kaya nga sabi nila sa akin, ma'am, 'yung two days, hindi na namin iindahin yon.
Now, this is what I'm going to ask. Itong amendment ninyo sa number, Page Number 3, I don't think what you are saying now is the right interpretation. Itong 2/3 na to, there is a basis why there is a provisions here. Employees availing of the maternity leaves period and benefit must receive not less than 2/3 of their regular monthly wages. Ngayon, let's see on the SSS contribution table. Do you think SSS contribution table will be changed? With the current situation right now, will SSS table contribution will be changed?
What, what do you mean?
There are SSS contributions here indicating the salaries and their premiums. Doon sa pinakadulo, fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty per month and over will have a monthly credit of sixteen thousand. Their premium is one thousand seven hundred fifty. Okay, now, how many employees now, female employees are receiving twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand, forty thousand? Now, this law says that you have to pay them on their average monthly cred- credits. So, ang interpretation ko rito, if, let's say, they have a twenty-five thousand salary, then you have to compute it with their salary credits, then it will exceed the sixteen thousand cap?
Maximum po 'yung sixteen thousand, that's the cap?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking is, uh, those who are availing more than the minimum wage?
Hindi, one point seventy-three, yun lang 'yung nag-aavail.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking on the value of their salary.
Because if for minimum wage earners, actually corporations would not actually pay any salary differential, kasi mas malaki pa siya doon sa competition 'yung matatanggap nila.
No, if you do the competition, kaya nga, ang, ang issue namin, ang issue ko rito is itong amendment ninyo on the letter B and letter C. This is not part of the RA eighty-two eighty-two. Now, the question is, how do you interpret this? Why there is a two-thirds?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put on record, as I was mentioning earlier, na ang nag-aavail lang talaga is one point seventy-three. And if you're asking above minimum wage, mas mababa pa sila, kasi majority of those who avail of it are those who are, are minimum wage earners, female minimum wage earners.
Mr. Speaker, I don't believe that that figure of one point something percent will stay. Year by year, definitely, there will have an increase. That is the reason why I'm asking, the viability of the SSS fund, because you are increasing their benefits, but there are provisions here that will make their benefits bigger. I'm not objecting to it, but I'm asking is the viability of the SSS fund. So, the question is, are you saying that you are increasing their premium in the coming years?
Mr. Chair, um, katulad po nung sinabi ko kanina, they might have to increase it by point three, point three percent, which is very, very minimal. Or if they don't do that, it would set back the actuarial to two years, but it is viable. SSS in their position said that it is viable. It would set them back by two years, but it is viable and doable, and it is something that can be implemented.
Well, that is not what you're saying, but, uh, as you can see through experience, that, uh, there are many times that they are not, uh, capable of paying their, uh, members. Now, the question is, you're putting additional cost or additional incentive that will become an expense of SSS and will become an expense of the employer. Now, the question now will be, how can you explain the two-thirds? Ang, uh, if you check on all the, on the RA's, you, you trace back RA one-one-six-one, and which is amended by RA seven-three-two-two of nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-two, and then amended by RA eighty-two eighty-two of two thousand six. Wala naman nakaindicate doon, uh, na dinagdagan ng, uh, letter B and letter C.
Mr. Speaker, if, if I may, um, matagal na po 'yung ating mga republic act na yun, at kung napapansin po natin, that's why ang, ang ating pung bansa ay napupunta sa nagmamahal or nagre-respeto sa gender equality, because we want to give this as a gift to women. Dahil po ngayon, more and more women are working, and we would like to be able to give value that they are the ones who are giving life to our, our fellow men. Kaya para sa akin, the cost that you're saying, even that difference, is so small, para hindi natin or ipagdamot natin sa mga babaeng nagbibigay buhay sa ating mga kababayan. Kaya...
May I remind the audience not to respond?
Mr. Speaker, kaya po natin pinapasa ang batas na to, dahil gusto natin pong iregalo to sa mga nanay na nagpapakahirap bigyan ng buhay tayong lahat dito sa ating bansa. And naniniwala ako, kahit may konting depresya to, 'yung effect ng pag-aalaga sa mga kababaihan na nanganak, 'yung contribution nila sa economy ay malaki, because maternal function is a social responsibility, and this is recognized by all national government agencies. 'Yung cost na i-makukuha nito, ma-outweigh ng lahat ng benefits. And this is actually in all position papers that has been submitted to us. Kaya, I would like to appeal to the gentleman, that kung ano man 'yung additional cost sa private sector, it's going to be very minimal, that even SSS is saying that point three is also minimal, and it would just set them back for two years, but they don't object to this because they know that it is viable.
Mr. Speaker, I'm not objecting to the benefit of the women, but ang sinasabi ko lang is, the viability, because when they put the two-thirds here and they put exemption, there's a problem, some, something will, will, uh, there's a problem that will arise from this. Pagtinignan niyo lang very clearly, they are saying that SSS cannot pay it, that's why two-thirds lang ang sinasabi nila, then the employer will be now, be the one paying it. And then they put an exemption so that they will not hitting those small industries or the... But if you look at their, uh, their exemption, some, if you just look at it, it go against each of their exemption. For example, they're saying those employees that below ten, uh, people, workers, and then they putting those, uh, uh, industry that are not exceeding three million in assets. Yun lang ano, ang, ang isang negosyo ngayon. For example, in our industry, this will hit the retail and the small business for sure. For example, in our industry, the gas industry, if you will be putting a, a small enterprise having three showrooms alone, that is cost more than three million. So now, the income of those industry cannot cope with this bill, the additional cost. This will be additional cost, and remind you, this will be advanced by the employer. Remember, a ten, it one hundred days will cost around fifty-five thousand pesos. Just imagine a small industry, how can he pay that fifty-five thousand? And when will SSS pay him back?
Mr. Speaker, kaya po naglagay po kami dito na exemptions para doon sa mga binring up na issues during the committee hearing. That's why we put these exemptions, and kaya po in-invite din natin ang ECOP para sila mismo i-enlighten kami, kung merong mga industriya na hindi makakakaya nito. Wala naman po silang pinot forward doon sa committee, except for these exemptions that we put in the bill. Kung meron po kayong gustong idagdag, then we can listen to it in the period of amendments para we could incorporate kung ano po 'yung concern ninyo na hindi po namin naipabilang dito sa batas na to. Pero gusto ko lang pong ulitin, na dito po sa ating bansa, kung ikumpara po natin sa ibang bansa, eh, tayo na po ang pinaka nahuhuli sa lahat in terms of number of days maternity leave. At ito namang po siguro ay napapanahon na iregalon natin sa ating mga nanay sa ating bansa. Kung, kung titignan po natin, ang, ang Cambodia po is, sorry, ang Cambodia is twelve weeks, Indonesia, twelve weeks, ang Mali, ang Myanmar, twelve weeks, ang Philippines, tayo po 'yung sixty, sixty days, ang Singapore, sixteen weeks, Thailand, twelve weeks, ang Vietnam, sixteen to twenty-four weeks. And halos lahat po sa kanilang mga bansa, employer nga po ang nagbabayad, at least dito sa atin, SSS po ang nagbabayad.
Well, basahin ko lang po ulit sa inyo ang labor productivity level among Asian countries. Number one is Japan, two thousand ten is ninety-eight thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. Singapore, sixty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars. Hong Kong, sixty-four thousand zero zero four dollars. Brunei, forty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Taipei and China, forty-two thousand eight hundred forty-four. Korea, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-eight. Malaysia, fifteen thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. Thailand, three thousand eight hundred thirteen. Philippines, three thousand five hundred seven. I mean, we are in the bottom when it comes to labor productivity, ngayon dadagdagan mo ngayon ang another forty days. Hindi, can you just explain to me, will, will this figure lies? Nagsisinungaling ba tong data na to that ECOP mismo ang nagbigay that our labor productivity level, it's too low? Kung titignan mo sa mga katabi nating bansa, how can we compete in the industry? I mean, pangit ang pananaw sa akin ng ating mga, uh, female worker, pero pinoproteksyonan ko 'yung inyong trabaho, dahil pagtinignan niyo ang ibang mga bansa, ang layo ng depresya natin. Asian countries lang itong pinag-uusapan natin.
Mr. Speaker, hindi po ba natin naisip na kaya po mababa rin siguro ang productivity, kasi hindi po sapat 'yung nabibigay na pahinga na naibibigay natin sa mga nanay na bagong panganak. Kaya nga po natin tinataasan to sa one hundred days, kasi ang isang babae na bagong panganak, kung mas nakapagpahinga, mas makakabalik sa trabaho ng mas productive pa. Kasi kailangan po nila to.
That is your opinion, Mr. Speaker.
No, no, hindi po ito opinyon, Mr. Speaker. Marami na pong studies ito, both here in the country and internationally. It has been proven in all researchers, in all researches, na ito po ang nagiging resulta. Kaya ako po ay talagang umaapila na, sabi naman po ng ating, um, congressman, hindi naman siya nag-oobject dito, kung meron po tayong gustong ipanokala during the period of amendments, willing naman po kaming makinig dito.
Okay, now, I will stop my interpolation if they will be amending to some of my requests. Number one?
Siguro po sa period of amendments?
No, I mean, you have to commit now, because kung natapos ang interpolation, wala namang kaming garantya na tatanggapin niyo ang amendment namin.
Sige po, kung gusto niyo pong sabihin.
So, number one, for the past three RA's, and the latest is the two thousand six RA's eighty-two eighty-two, under E, that the maternity benefit provided under this section shall be paid only for the first four deliveries. Will you, willing and accept that provisions?
Yes.
Okay, but because, ano nakaindicate sa bill ninyo? Ano nakaindicate, maybe you have to, you have to say it before, because nakalagay dito, maternity leaves shall be granted to female workers in every instance of pregnancy, miscarriage, or abortion, regardless of its frequency.
Yes, unlimited po sa bill, but we're amenable to accept the first four deliveries.
Okay, next will be, can we remove letter C? Employees availing of the maternity leaves periods and benefit must receive not less than two-thirds of their regular monthly wages. And the employer from the private sector shall be responsible to pay the salary differentials between the actual cash benefit received from the social security system. No, no, I, I'm, uh, I'm asking if they will accept it?
Sir, may di ba kailangan to?
Mr. Chair, move to suspend.
Session suspended.
Session suspended.
Edita ko nakita.
Edita ko, uy.
Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill number four-one-one-three. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, allow me to greet some guests in the gallery. First, the guests of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Raney Abu. Uh, these are the barangay captains of the municipality of San Luis from the second district of Patangas headed by ABC President Eileen Ocampo. These are Julieta Mirano, Eduardo Gatbonton, Mariel Gonzalo Florente Corales, Juanatienza, Glicario Mendoza, Alex Bacani, Hunar Cabrera, Wilma Magnaye, Johnald Onda, Marlin Devilia, Preserverando Castilla, Emeterio Dimafelix, Robelito Vergara, Alfred Garcia Junior, Wakian Balderama, Lito Marco, Esmeralda Mauleón, Guillermo Capuno, Roy Bonzol, Jesús Caballo, Lovett Lacanlalay, and Luciano Villanueva.
Sa mga kapitan ko po ng barangay sa bahay ng San Luis, Patangas, malugod po namin kayong tinatanggap dito sa camera di representante. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I'd also like to greet the guests of the Honorable Randolph Ting, Baby Vargas Alfonso, and Ramon Nolasco. These are Vice Mayor Johnny Backwood of the municipality of, um, Bugao Kagayan, SB Virginia Herrero, Jomar Miguel, Joshua Villanueva, Lilith Ulep, Roel Gazman, ABC, um, Honor Javier, and SK Federation President Ray Mart Bagisan? Bagisan.
Sa mga panauin po ng mga kasamahan naming kinatawang Ting, Alfonso and Nolasco, maligaya pong pagdating sa inyo. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend.
Session suspended.
Uh, Bollet? Bollet?
Oo nga, hindi rin akala. Eh, pinadudet kasi kami kahapon, so akala ko this would be kind of... Sorry, nakasalam.
What's the motion for adoption?
Ano kayo mag-e-take up? Come say, so you'll commit to report.
So, niya ba yon?
Ano kayo mag-e-take? Commit to report.
And then we'll... Read title of the motion, then after you're done. Can you stand here? I'm gonna say it.
Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
I move that we consider House Resolution. Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution number four-five-six as contained in Committee Report number seven-four-seven, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said resolution. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Resolution four-five-six.
House Resolution number four-five-six. A resolution calling for an urgent investigation in aid of legislation on illegal drug trading activities in the province of Sambagadel Norte. Privilege speech number eighty-four. Illegal drug trade in his district and privilege speech number eighty-eight. The action to press releases in relation to his privileged speech related drug-related activities in his district in Sambagadel Norte.
Those who are favor, those are...
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the findings and recommendations as contained in the Committee Report seven-four-seven. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Committee Report seven-four-seven is adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker? Mister Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill six-seven-seven-zero as contained in Committee Report five-zero-eight, and direct the Secretary General to once again read the title of the said measure. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill six-seven-seven-zero under Committee Report five-zero-eight. For consideration of second reading.
House Bill number six-seven-seven-zero. An act increasing the service incentive leave of employees amending for the purpose, Article ninety-five of Presidential decree number four-four-two as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, the parliamentary status of the said bill is that it is in the period of amendments. May we know, Mister Speaker, from the honorable sponsor, if there are any committee amendments?
Mister Speaker, we don't have any committee amendments.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, uh, House Bill six-seven-seven-zero.
Those who are in favor on House Bill six-seven-seven-zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes of it, House Bill six-seven-seven-zero is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number ten dated August fourteen, two thousand eighteen.
Any objection? The Chair is none. Journal number ten dated August fourteen, two thousand eighteen is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing votes on House Bill number six-zero-six-five, renaming the Naval State University in the municipality of Naval, sorry, province of Biliran as the Biliran Province State University or BILSU. Uh, these are Representatives Anne Hofer, Rojelio Espina, Victoria Isabel Noel, and Juliet Cortuna. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill number three-seven-six-four, providing for the rehabilitation and modernization of the Philippine General Hospital or PGH, creating PGH Rehabilitation and Modernization Fund from the Committee on Health to the Committees on Government, Reorganization, and Health.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I also move for the change of referral of the follow, of, uh, House Bill number four-zero-nine-six, creating the National Eye Center from the Committee on Health to the Committees on Government, Reorganization, and Health. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Bill number seven-six-seven-zero, creating the Philippine Commission on Autism, Spectrum Disorders and the Office of Autism Services from the Committee on Health to the Committees on Government, Reorganization, and Health. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
And finally, Mister Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Bill number four-zero-six-seven, amending Republic Act number seven-zero-four-two as amended by Republic Act number eight-one-seven-nine, otherwise known as the Foreign Investments Act of nineteen ninety-one, from the Committee on Trade and Industry to the Committees on Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry. So move. from the Committee on Trade and Industry to the Committees on Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, move to suspend.
Session suspended. Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include as additional co-authors of bills and resolutions that are pending in the committees, the members appearing in the lists to be submitted by the Committee on Rules after due verification of their requests for inclusion as co-authors of such bills and resolutions. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to the House, uh, Bill 7070, 7820, and 7882 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 6715, separating the Southern Philippines Agriculture Business Marine and Aquatic School of Technology or SPAMAS Digos City Campus in Digos City of Digos, Davao del Sur. Uh, Representatives Anne Hofer, Mercedes Cagas, Lauren Bautista Bandigan, and Juliet Cortuna. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
And, Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 6741, converting the Zambanga City State Polytechnic College into a state university. These are Representatives Anne Hofer, Celso La Brigat, and Ju- Juliet Cortuna. So move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, we'd like to move for the election of the following for the commission appointments. Move that we elect Scott Davis Lanete Vice Joel Mayo Almario. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved.
As deputy speakers, uh, Mr. Speaker, on- again, on the part of the majority, would like to elect Prospero A. Pichai Junior Vice Rom- Romero Kimbo. So move them, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
As again, for deputy speakers, on the part of the majority, like to move that we elect Arthur Siyap Vice Gwendolin F. Garcia. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Or the Committee on Economic Affairs, the majority moves to elect as chairperson, Gwendolin F. Garcia Vice Arthur Siyap. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
For the Committee on Ways and Means, as member, uh, majority moves that we elect Romero Kimbo Vice Rodolfo T. Albano III. Uh, Mr. Speaker, so move.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
On the Committee on Accounts, as vice chairperson, the majority moves that we elect Jennifer Austria Barzaga Vice George Bollet Banal. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
As members of the Committee on Accounts, the majority moves that we elect George T. Almonte Vice Rodolfo T. Albano III. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Again, uh, again, as member of Committee on Accounts, we move to elect Xavier Jesús Diromualdo Vice Eileen Siradasa. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
For the Committee on Account- Appropriations, Committee on Appropriations, as vice chairperson, the majority moves to elect Jose Ping Ping Ay Tehada Vice Doi Ciliacson. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
And as members of the Committee on Appropriations, the majority elects the following. JB Bernos Vice Imadina Arabad, Alexandria P. Gonzalez Vice Roel Peter S. Gonzaga, Florida Rita P. Robes Vice Mauyag June Papandayan Junior. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved.
And last, Mr. Speaker, for the Committee on Basic Education, as member, the majority moves that we elect Rosano Rafino B. Biazon Vice Roel Peter S. Gonzaga. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the House recess from August 16, 2018 to August 27, 2018.
Any objection? The Chair is not. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session till 3:00 PM, August 28, 2018. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Session is adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon, August 28, 2018, Tuesday.